Okay, would you like to call the meeting to order? Do we will stand for a moment of silence and say the pleasure allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll have the roll call.
Amy Kurari.
Here.
Michael Cox. Peter Hansel.
Here.
Roberta Guy.
Here.
Christopher Cool.
Here.
Richard Taylor.
Here.
Chairman Charles Craig.
Here. And proof of publication.
The items were published and can't be placed on November 29, 2019, December 20, 2019, and December 27, 2019, or by active mail address.
All right, and I think we have some minutes to approve.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following minutes. They're all for 2019, July 25th, August the 8th, August 22nd, September the 5th, September 26th, October the 10th, October 24th, November 7th, and November 21st.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second. Further discussion of the motion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries? Okay, welcome everybody today. We're the Planning Commission, and we're appointed by the Board of County Commissioners. We meet twice a month. We serve as a local planning agency, and we hold public hearings and transmit to the Board of County Commissioners recommendations on the comprehensive plan amendments, land development code amendments, rezonings and conditional use requests. Planning Commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance exceptions, requests, and certain alternative standard requests. However, final decisions may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. Anyone who's in opposition to any development code amendment, rezoning, conditional use, or any item where the Planning Commission transmits a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, it's important that you attend the appropriate Board of County Commissioner meeting. For those of you who are not familiar with the format that we follow here, we have three different segments. We have continuances. Those are items where the staff has requested, or the applicant has requested a continuance for any number of reasons. It's been our custom to approve those requests unless we have extenuating circumstances. We also have consent agenda. Those items are listed on our agenda as a consent item. We'll go through those one at a time, and as I read them off, if there's anything that you'd like discussed today, please raise your hand. We'll pull from consent, and we'll discuss it on the regular agenda, which is the third item. Applicants will have three minutes to make their presentations, and the questioners or the public will have opportunities to respond, to ask questions, and then the applicant will have a chance to respond. If there's been any requests, at least 24 hours in advance of this meeting in writing for extra time, we may grant extra time. I don't think we have any of those. Is that correct? Okay, and so anybody who has a telephone with you, it's probably each one of you, it's a good time to put it on the silent position. And before we start the regular meeting, we're opening the meeting for public comment for anything that's not appearing on today's agenda. If there's something that you're here to talk about that's not on today's agenda, this is the time for you to come forward and give us your name and address. You don't see anyone? So I think we're ready to start the regular meeting. Okay. Yes. So anyone who plans to give testimony today, if you please raise your right hand, stand and raise your right hand, and be sworn. Anyone who plans to come up and speak today?
Do you swear or consent to any of our candidates or procedures to help you out?
I do.
Shall I begin?
You shall.
Great, thank you so much. You should have a document at the podium, at the dais, sorry, there, which is PDD 20 CU 11. This is an item that was actually continued at the last Planning Commission on December 12, 2019, to this Planning Commission. It's in the name of Hajka and Mursad Kusivich for multiple family dwellings in a C2 general commercial district. The Planning and Development Department is asking that this item be continued to a date uncertain. This is the old Alfred State Bank Building, so there's a lot of different considerations to be had with any type of redevelopment or any conditional use action on the site. So we would like the applicant to have enough time to go through those items. So for that purpose, we're asking for the item to be continued to a date uncertain instead of having to continue it month to month.
All right, so do I have a motion to continue to a date uncertain?
So move. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Also, I'd like you to bring your attention to item P10. On that item is PDD 20 7455, under the name Dana Family Trust from Home Occupation for Tattoo Parlour in an ER Estate Residential District. On that item, it is a policy that when an item becomes contentious, when we get letters of objection on an item, that the item be continued to the side of the county it's closest to. So in this regard, we are requesting that the item be continued to the January 23 Planning Commission meeting at 1:30 in Newport Ritchie. There have also been several ex parte communications from folks in opposition to the Planning Commission members, and I just wanted to read those into the record as well. Those have been provided to the Clerk's office, and we will include those in the packet moving forward on the 23rd. So the request on that one is to continue to the January 23, 2020 Planning Commission meeting at 1:30 in Newport Ritchie.
Okay, so we have a request to continue, have a motion. I have a motion to continue to the January 23?
I'll make the motion.
So we have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Denise, did you want them to receive and file the ex parte communications today?
I provided the ex parte communications to the Clerk's office through email. They've all gone to the Planning Commission members.
Probably just in abundance caution, do a motion to receive and file the ex parte communications as well.
Okay, so do I have a motion to receive and file the ex parte communications on this particular?
I'll make the motion.
I second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion of the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So we're going to move on to item PC1. PC1 is PDD 20 7458. It is a special exception under the name of Jeffrey E. and Robin Pilzinski for a private school for yoga classes in an AR agricultural residential district. This item comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as contained in your agenda packet.
All right, is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? I don't see any objections.
Following item is PC2, PDD 20 0230. It's a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment for CPAL 1914, Pittman, Massey, Jordan. It's providing for large-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map 2-13 rural area, removing the Pittman, Massey, and Jordan parcels from the rural area, Area 1. On this item, you're sitting as the local planning agency, and what we're asking on this item is for you to find the item consistent with the comprehensive plan and recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners.
All right, is the applicant present?
It's a staff initiated, I apologize, I should have stated that.
All right, is there anybody here to speak to that? Okay, would you like to have it pulled? You want to talk about it today? So PC2?
Okay, so we'll pull that item. Item PC2 will be pulled from consent. Okay. Item PC3 is the accompanying land development code amendment. On this item as well, you're sitting as the local planning agency. This item is an ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, I mean Land Development Code, I apologize, Section 604. There are just some maps that are being amended, 604-1, 604-2, and 604-4, to actually show that the Massey and the Pittman, Massey, Jordan parcels are no longer part of those maps. And on this item, as you're sitting as a local planning agency, we're asking that you find this item consistent with the comprehensive plan and that you recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners.
Denise, you probably really shouldn't consider PC3 until they've acted on PC2.
Okay, so then we'll...
So you probably need to have it pulled.
Okay, so noted. Let me move on to PC4. PC4 is PDD 20 7456. This is a zoning amendment, Gonzalo and Irene Martinez. It's for a change in zoning from AC Agricultural District to an AR5 Agricultural Residential District. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval.
All right. Is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? I don't see anyone. Is there? Are you the applicant?
No, I'm not the applicant.
Okay, I said, is the applicant present? You raised your hand, so that's what I was concerned about. Has everybody got my glasses on? Okay, you're the applicant.
All right.
So we're going to pull that one too, then?
Yes. Okay, following item is PC5, PDD 20 7457. Teresa M. Christensen. It's for a change in zoning from AR Agricultural Residential to an R2 Low Density Residential District. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval.
Okay, applicant present? Anyone here to object? No objections on that one?
Item PC6 is PDD 20 CU 14. It's in the name of Grand Oak Square LLC, Arepa Mia Cafe, for the sale of alcoholic beverages, beer and wine only, on-premise consumption in conjunction with the operation of a restaurant in a C2 general commercial district. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions.
Is the applicant present? Is anybody in here? You're the applicant? Okay, is anyone here to object?
Item PC7 is PDD 20 CU 15, in the name of Mishroom Gold Properties LP, The Grove at Wesley Chapel, for the sale of beer, wine, liquor, packaged sales, and on-premise consumption in conjunction with the operation of a shopping center in a master plan unit development district. This comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions.
Okay, and you're the applicant? Applicant. Anyone here to object? No one?
And that's the end of the consent agenda with items PC2, PC3, and PC4 pulled.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve consent agenda as it currently stands?
To be clear, that's PC1, PC5, PC6, and PC7.
I'll make the motion to approve PC1, 5, 6, and 7.
He's second.
And we have a second? Any further discussion of the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
So are we back to PC2?
Are we doing PC2, or are we doing PC?
I think PC2 would be the next one.
Okay, is that what you're doing, Terry?
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item PC2 is PDD 20 0230, Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment, CPAL 1914, Pittman, Massey, Jordan. The purpose of the county-initiated comprehensive plan amendment is to remove the Pittman, Massey, and Jordan ECMUD parcels from the northeast rural area, which is Area 1, and identified on FLU map, future land use map, 2-13 rural area, per the Board of County Commissioners' direction at the August 9, 2016 BCC meeting. The location of the parcels, which I'll show a slide in a second, are at the northeast corner of State Road 52 and Happy Hill Road, and the Jordan ECMUD parcels are on the west side of US 301. The resolution for you today is to do a future land use amendment to map 2-13, the rural area, to remove these parcels from that map. And there is an accompanying rezoning, which is the next item on the agenda, to amend Section 604, specifically the figures stated there, 604-1, -2, -3, and -4, to remove the Jordan parcels and the Pittman parcels from the overlay itself, which is found in the Land Development Code.
Terry, to be clear, that's not a rezoning, that's a Land Development Code amendment, right?
I'm sorry, correct. Land Development Code amendment. A map amendment within the Land Development Code.
Okay, all right.
This is the location of the Jordan EC FLU, just north of Dade City. And then the Pittman, Massey parcels are located to the east of San Antonio-St. Leo area. This map is indicating map 2-13, which is the location of the two parcels that we're referring to today within Area 1. And the Board of County Commissioners had found that these were not to be part of the northeast rural area, and mandated their removal back in 2016. These are aerials of the two properties. So on the left is the Jordan ECMUD area. It's bounded on US 301 on the west, with Ashbrook to the north. And then on the right is the Pittman, Massey parcels, which are at the northwest corner of State Road 52 and Happy Hill, Prospect Road is to the south there on State Road 52. These are the future land use designations in the surrounding area. And the following policies are consistent with the proposed comprehensive plan amendment. Object of FLU 2-1, preserve the rural lifestyles in northeast Pasco County. Object of FLU 2-3, protect existing rural neighborhoods. And policy FLU 188, which is the employment center purpose. With that, we recommend to the local planning agency that you find the proposed amendments consistent with the comprehensive plan and to recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners. And we have staff on standby for remote for any particular questions.
Okay, we'll see what questions we have. I think we have a couple of people that want to have to ask questions. So I think we had a couple of people that wanted to speak. If you want to come forward and state your name and address, we'll try to get your questions answered. If you just state your name and address, you might have to pull that microphone down a bit. There you go.
I can't hear you. Okay, I'm here to talk about Pittman, Massey.
I need your name and address.
Carol Jankie, 12540 Abbey Drive. My home backs up to Roth Lane, formerly Old Pasco Road, and you're...
Hold on one second. Let me get that little flash through here.
Okay, okay, okay. My home backs up to Roth Lane, formerly Old Pasco Road, and nearly 90% of the road is broken up. It's used as a connector road to State Road 52 to Dade City and 579 North Happy Hill Road to the St. Joe area. This road is often used when congestion occurs at State Road 52 and Prospect Road. I'm proposing that a three- to five-year moratorium is placed on all these requested changes for projects until Pasco County can rebuild Prospect, Clinton, and Roth Lane. The Tampa Bay Times State, State Road 52 won't be completed until 2024. And I have a question here. Your map shows this huge rural area, and my concern is, wouldn't all the contiguous property owners be entitled to the same treatment and development that is the Massey 22 acres? That's the 38 acres north of that and the 13 acres north of the 38 acres. They all back up to East Point. I understand that there is an egress through these properties from East Point to align with Roth Lane. Is this now the intent to use this access to Happy Hill Road? That would be disastrous because the vehicles speed and fly down that Happy Hill Road to that light all the time. Many of the landowners that were rural agricultural have benefited from the low property taxes for many years. Obviously, there is some plan to develop, or their requests wouldn't be made to take this property to a different tax base. A moratorium will, until plans to rebuild the roads necessary to serve the area is the right way to go to avoid more congestion. Now is the time to get it right.
Ma'am, can I ask you a question? Because I'm a little unclear. What is the reason you're objecting to the whole property being removed from the rural area? This isn't a rezoning, I want you to be clear, they're not...
Well, I've been told now, I did not know this till right here today, that they told me this is already zoned commercial. The Pittman, Massey property is already zoned commercial. I did not know that.
The action today is not rezoning this property. The action today is to remove it from a overlay, the rural overlay area.
Right, but then there will be subsequent actions to get it to where they want it to be.
But what is your objection to it being removed from the rural overlay?
I don't have an objection. I'm saying a delay or a moratorium for three to five years, till that intersection down there with Prospect and Clinton and 52, we know what's going to be there.
I understand your concerns, I'm just trying to figure how this relates to the request to remove it from the rural area.
I'm not, I guess I'm not, you know, contending that. I'm just saying it needs to be delayed. Because I think the other property owners would have the same rights to have their property removed from the rural area, too, the 36 acres north of that.
I'm just saying typically, traffic impacts, which it sounds like that your major concern, are evaluated at the time of a rezoning request or a site plan request. We don't have those before us today.
I know you don't.
Okay, so do you want to be notified if we get a rezoning or a site plan request on that property?
Well, I was told it was already rezoned. I didn't know that, and I've lived there for 42 years.
Terry, maybe you can address the zoning of the Pittman, Massey property.
Is there anything else that you have before Terry comes back up and answers that?
Are you talking to me?
Yes.
What was the question?
Just wanted to make sure that was the main question you had before Mr. Pito's comes back up and answers your question.
Okay, yes, right. Like I said, I'm not trying to stop people from developing their property. I'm trying to say that the county needs to have a plan at that intersection, because we know that ultimately, it will be developed.
And I'm not saying I disagree with you, ma'am, we just don't have a development application in front of us today.
Right, I understand.
Okay, thank you.
And like I said, I didn't know today until I came here and Mr. Hobby told me that it was already zoned commercial.
Okay, well, Mr. Pito's is going to address what it's the current zoning.
And I've lived there for 42 years.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Terry Pito's, Planning and Development. What we're proposing here today is not a rezoning. Thank you, David, for correcting me during the presentation, I didn't mean to use that word rezoning. The zoning status, we're going to bring it up here in just a second. Sure. Oh. We're simply removing these properties from the northeast rural area, which is Area 1, and then updating overlay maps within Section 604 of the Land Development Code to reflect the removal. So we're not changing the zoning in any way. What the zoning is today is what the zoning will remain, and we'll show the zoning designations in just a second here on the overhead. So I think that answers the question. There's no development that's being proposed, we're simply following up here with what the Board of County Commissioners had mandated in 2016. And through a backlog of projects and staff turnover, we've only now been able to get to the project.
So what is the current zoning of the Pittman, Massey parcel?
The current zoning on this parcel here is, a portion of it is C2 General Commercial District, and that's original 1975 zoning. So that was the original zoning that was overlaid on that parcel when zoning came into effect on December 1, 1975. And then the portion that's closest to the northern boundary is zoned AR Agricultural Residential, and that's also original 1975 zoning on that parcel.
So is it accurate to say that to develop the property commercially, likely would have to go through some kind of rezoning request?
A portion of the property, yes, you would have to go through some kind of zoning.
And would staff look at the traffic impacts at that time?
Yes.
Okay. Hopefully that addresses...
And in the next presentation, we'll actually show the overlay maps to further illustrate what changes are taking place within the Land Development Code.
Okay. So that covers PC2.
She is, if somebody else wants to speak?
Oh, yeah, okay. Please come forward.
Thank you. Beverly Harmon, 12705 Timber Run, Dade City, 33525. On one of the earlier slides, I think it says the northeast corner of Happy Hill at State Road 52, instead of the northwest corner. You may want to check your slides, because I think one of the previous ones mislabeled which corner it is. It's not the northeast corner, it would be the northwest. So it was on one of your slides in the print. And I'm just kind of echoing what Mrs. Jankie said, that we understand that that property is zoned, most of it is zoned commercially already, and that there is some confusion between an overlay, a rural overlay, over a commercial property. So that's what you're trying to do here, is remove that confusion and just make sure that it's listed as commercial. We're not objecting to the fact that someday, somebody's going to develop that property commercially. We know that. We just want to make sure that you hear us when those kind of applications come forward, that the roads and the infrastructure at present are not there, and that before any further development goes in there, that those pieces of infrastructure need to be there. Pasco County, you know, sorry to say, but is sometimes behind the curve when they're putting infrastructure in and they're making development and they're approving things to go in. So we don't want to get it wrong the next time, especially because it impacts our neighborhood. But we understand that what you're doing today is just removing some confusion in how that parcel is looked at.
Hey, you are worried that the county and state are about to build the extension, the 52 Clinton Avenue Extension Project that is going to provide some relief to that intersection?
We understand that that's what's supposed to happen, but again, it's going to be quite a while before that gets done, and we're experiencing...
It's not as long as you think. It's going under construction, I think sometime in the next year. Or maybe already be under construction.
And hopefully that will relieve some of the congestion that we're experiencing already in some of the traffic. But Roth, as Mrs. Jankie said, is a cut-through between Happy Hill and State Road 52. And it is a mess. It's, my husband likes it, because he said it's got like built-in speed calmers, because it's so potholed and rough. But it really doesn't slow the traffic down. They buzz through there to cut off going to that stoplight at Happy Hill and Prospect. They use, Roth is a little cut-through instead. So anyway, again, we just want to make sure that if you make a change, and if there are development proposals that come forward, that the infrastructure's there first, and that we get notified in a timely manner so that we can make sure that it's going to meet with our, what we want in our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, this is Clark Hobby, Hobby &amp; Hobby, PA 109 North Brush Street, Tampa, Florida. Have been sworn, I'll keep it brief. So I've represented these families for many, many years. The Pittman parcel has original zoning. Originally, it was 400 feet of C2. There's been some takings over time, but the entirety of that parcel's either C2 or H... There's been some takings over time, but the entirety of that parcel's either C2 or has ROR, future land use. It's been declared a nodal property, so it's got certain vested rights with regard to the non-ROR portion. There is no plan of development right now. As you will note, it took staff, you know, four years or three and a half years just to get this removal agenda going. So we haven't been pushing for anything even on the vested C2 we already have. But we do want to take this property and the Jordans out because they're the only two large commercial tracks in all of northeast Pasco. And we feel that it's confusing to the public and to users in general to say, I've got a large employment center like the Jordans have or a large commercial track. But, oh, by the way, it's in a rural area. The two concepts are just totally inconsistent. And that's why the board instructed staff to initiate this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Do we want to talk about?
Are you going to speak or?
The one thing that Nancy has with three-four-one-one-oh, a nice place that I understand that it was taken out, that should be taken out of the Northeast Rural Area Plan, even though I don't really like them pulling things from it. But it's too bad you can't leave in some of the stuff that complies with the Northeast Rural Area. Like there's certain protections for scenic roadways and let's see, what was it? Topography alter, alterations. They'll keep them from digging pits and things along that line. So it's too bad that those protections aren't going to still comply. Perhaps you could give it some thought and put some still in so the area remains lovely. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, is anyone? So should we go to four or just do these one at a time?
You should take action on this one first.
Okay. So do we have a motion then on PC two?
I move a motion to approval.
So we have a motion to approve PC two.
I'll second.
And we have a second. Any further discussion of that? All in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Okay, yeah, what was the next one that was?
Oh, PC three is the companion, change to the Land Development Code. So rather than make Terry do another presentation, you might want to just ask if there's anybody that has any opposition.
Was there anybody that raised their hand in opposition to this one? Am I not seeing anyone?
I don't see anyone raising their hand.
Okay, I don't see anyone.
If I may simply show the overlay maps.
Yeah, sure.
Just for the Land Development Code piece of it. Again, same project. This is the companion piece. Now we're in the Land Development Code, changing Section six oh four, same maps as before. These are the overlay maps that we're referring to that are in the Land Development Code. Again, it's simply carving out the two properties that we were, that we just discussed. And this also comes with a recommendation, of course, to find it consistent with the company's plan and to recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners.
All right. Not seeing any objections. Do I have a motion to approve? I move that we approve PC three.
I'll second.
Motion, a second. Should approve it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Foes? Okay, motion carries.
Okay, we're going to move on to item PC four. Item PC four is PDD twenty-seven-four-five-six. It's a rezoning from AC Agricultural District to AR five Agricultural Residential District for a parcel that has ten point zero-nine acres. The request is to subdivide that ten point zero-nine acre parcel into two five more or less acre parcels. It's located in northeast Pasco County on the southwest corner of the intersection of Old Trelby Road and Trelby Trail. The applicant again proposes two residential lots in conformance with the AR five Agricultural Residential District standards of development. The subject site does have a RES one, future land use classification, which is the potential for a density of one dwelling per acre. They are actually going, proposing a zoning amendment that would put them under the AGR, which is one dwelling per five acres, future land use classification. Although the future land use classification here is RES one, one dwelling unit per acre. The subject area is consistent with, with the proposed use. As you can see, surrounding the parcel is R1MH. There's AR, which is one acre lots. Most of these lots are five acres or greater. And those were approved through a development determination back in nineteen ninety. This is part of the Trelby Trails Development Determination that was approved for a total forty-four lots. This particular lot is one of those lots. And when that, when that development determination was made, it would have considered this lot from this period on is considered a parcel for the purposes of dividing the parcel. So they would be able to divide, if this rezoning is approved, they would be able to divide the parcel into two five acre lots without going through a preliminary development plan. I'm showing the future land use classification on this slide. The surrounding future land use is RES one to the north, AGR to the south, AG to the west, and RES three and RES six to the east. This is the, showing the access from Old Trelby Road. And this comes here with a recommendation of approval. And here for any questions you may have, I know there's some folks who would like to speak on the item.
All right. Thank you, Denise. Okay, I think we had a couple of people that wanted to speak on this one. If you'll raise your hand. The applicants are present, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Cheryl Mitchell, two-zero-zero-one-four Arabian Way, Dade City, three-three-five-two-three. My husband and I bought our property. Will be impacted by this subdivision. We were told by not once but twice at Port St. Richie with undue research of the files of Greenwall and Maryland Greenwall's development. Now, this plot, it's very nice on that map to say that this is residential, that's residential, when in fact, a lot of it is ag. It is boarded by a fifty acre horse farm, then a ten acre with the potential of the woman trying to do one acres. Then the rest on that parcel is ten acres. If they wanted a five acre lot, they could have bought on the other side off of Logan Lane, where it was already planned and approved. This is going to open a Pandora's box. This is going to give me the right on my twenty acres under an Article seventy-eight to do five acre lots. Is this county ready and willing for this type of development and this kind of snowball? I appreciate somebody coming in, wanting to build their home. I don't think they're going to be living in two houses. So I think this should be kept as ten acres till further study. It is not comparable. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else objects?
Richard Mitchell. We have a water problem there.
What's your address, Mr. Mitchell?
Excuse me?
Your address?
Zero, two-zero-zero-one-four Arabian Way, Dade City.
Thank you. Aye.
Few of us neighbors. It's a private road. We bought Millings and put down because we're getting washouts all the time. The more houses you put in there, you have more water running out into the streets. And that's my biggest problem. I have no problem with changing for one home, which men is entitled to have his home on his property. But to buy a piece of property for profit and cut it in half in a agricultural district for animals, I don't think it's right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, the applicant? Would you like to make a, tell us what you want to do there? Come on, if you come up.
He can just come up here.
Come up to the front and give us your name and address and tell us what it is you want to do there.
Irene and Gonzalo Martinez, one-four-two-three-zero Mountains Iron Road, Dade City, three-three-five-two-three. So we're just planning on dividing into five acres. We're not going to put more than two houses. And we want to probably do one for our family and then maybe in the future for one of his daughters. So it's not more than two.
Okay, so it's just for your personal residence?
For the moment, yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right. Anything you want to say to address their concerns about the roadway or anything like that?
It's actually a corner lot, so there, what's the road? I know Trelby, yeah, so there's going to be an entrance on one side and then the entrance on the other side. So it's not going to be like on Trelby Trail. That's where it goes back to the other houses. That's only going to be one side of the house and the other house is going to be facing Trelby Trail, no, road. What's that? Yeah. So it's a corner lot, so they'll have two different separate entrance, which.
Okay. All right, do we have any questions up here?
I have one. If, if we approve this, is it true that anybody that owns land in around that area up there can then also subdivide into five acre lots, as the one person said?
So I'm, I'm not certain where the folks who spoke live. But as you see, if you look at this area here, this is AG. That's one dwelling per ten acres. The area where we're looking at this land use here is RES one, but they're going to AR five, which is one per five. So if they're in this area, this AG, that's one per ten. If they're here in AGR and their property's zoned, it is one per five. It's already one per. If their property's zoned, it's already one per five. Let's look at what the zoning district is. Yeah, so this part, so these folks in these parcels here would have to come in for a rezoning to change it, to have five acre lots. Because currently they're zoned for ten acre lots.
And their piece of property is one for ten, correct?
Currently their piece of property is one for ten. They're just asking today for it to be one for five. And the future land use is actually one for one.
Yeah, okay. So is this considered spot zoning or something along that? I'm not too sure if that's the way to word that question.
Well, it's, it's not spot zoning because of the pattern of development. And there's also other zonings that are even more intense in the area. So here you've got AR, which is one for one. Here you've got R1MH, which is one for twenty thousand square feet. Here you've got R1MH, which is one for twenty thousand square feet. Here you've got AR one, which is one for one, same here. So you've got different transitional zonies out there that are less than five acre lots.
Well, I think you said the future land use is one for one.
Is RES one, one for one.
Right, so this would be less intense than.
Less intense than the previous.
Yeah. Okay, anything else? Anybody? Roberto? Okay, do I hear a motion?
Motion for approval.
So we have a motion to approve. Any second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Let me find out what's going on with the clicker and we'll move on to the regular agenda.
Hey Denise?
Yes.
I have a pointer. That will help.
Okay, I got it done.
You got it?
There was just something going on with the.
This is old timey there.
Good afternoon, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Ernie Monaco. I am a manager of special districts for Pasco County, of which there are two dependent special districts, Village of Pasadena Hills and Connected City. Just to refresh your memory, these limited single-purpose dependent districts are created to prevent urban sprawl, manage environmental and conservation resources, and to help assist the county to deliver capital, infrastructure, facilities, and services in an efficient manner so as not to overburden the local governments and taxpayers. In fact, their origins are in Chapter one eighty-nine, Part two of the Florida statutes. And actually, in your stewardship ordinance booklet, which is one of those four, the first two pages actually describe the purpose and intent of the Village of Pasadena Hills Dependence Special District. Each of these districts referred to as stewardship districts have a unique set of enabling documents. And you can see in your packet, there's, there's a proposed financial plan, proposed comp plan amendment, proposed Land Development Code, which includes the stewardship ordinance and the master roadway plan. That part will be another item. Right now, we're going to focus on the comprehensive plan. Today, I bring to you two items, the first of which is here, P eight, PDD twenty-dash-zero-two-two-three, comprehensive plan amendment, large scale, twenty-dash-zero-zero-five, Village of Pasadena Hills, Chapter two revisions. Let me do this right now quickly. I'm just pass out.
We don't need anything else.
Ernie, we have a lot of books up here, man. Are you passing out more books? Because we have all these books here.
Are you short books?
No, we're, we're full.
We have a bunch of books up here. What are you passing out?
I'm passing out the revised, I'm passing out the revised ordinance that goes with this because that, I think the.
Okay.
I just think it would have, I mean.
Okay, that's fine. Go ahead.
Okay.
I'm going to give both of ours.
You don't really need to. This is something that's just, staff is, it's a modified version of what was uploaded.
What I'd like to do today is actually give you a brief history of how we got to where we are today. And then to continue to go through the slides to demonstrate the comp plan consistency. And then I'd like to, after that, turn it over to Pat Gasaway, who's from Height Design, who was hired by the property owners group to put together.
Can I stop you for a second? They need to take their conversation outside because it's.
Yeah.
Sir, you, you all can discuss that out in the hall.
Okay. What I'd like to do today is give you guys a.
Start over, please.
Yes. A brief history of how we got to where we are today. Then I will continue with the slide presentation on the comp plan amendment. And then I will turn it over to Pat Gasaway from Height Design, who was hired by the property owners group of the Villages of Pasadena Hills. And he's actually presenting the nitty-gritty, the actual specific details to the revisions of the VOPH update. So these, just I make a note here that these revisions are actually a joint effort between the planning staff and our very talented and very precise legal, illegal legal here, David G. over there, as well as with Height Design planners and Joel Two representing the legal for VOPH property owners group. We met weekly for a few hours a week. We hashed out a lot of things. It was actually pretty, I, I find very enjoyable because there's a lot of his working sessions and negotiations and talking about things. Because I went through this with Connected City. So I actually enjoyed it a lot. And I'm really thankful these guys are smart and intelligent. Anyway, we wanted to do a lot of good work and I think we've actually, the product group does represent that. So following Pat's presentation, the public hearing, and your vote, I will then present the other Land Development Code amendment requesting. I will then present the other land development code amendment requesting that in order to implement the actual plans for the amended CPAL. Let me look at the project overview. Whoops, I keep going back here. I'm sorry. Okay, here we go, okay. We'd like you to find the proposed revisions as a result of the 2019 VOPH update, amending Chapter 2, future land use, six to be consistent with the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan. Quick location here is the Village of Pasadena Hills. It's bounded on the west by Curly Road, on the north by Clinton Avenue, on the east by US 301, and the south by Elin Boulevard. Specifically, what we would like to resolve, I want to just read the comprehensive plan amendment title in sense. I'm sorry, I got the wrong one here. I'm looking at Pittman here. Okay. The Village of Pasadena Hills Proposed Flu Amendment, Chapter 2, Goal Flu 6, Text and Figures PH-1 through PH-8, PH-12 through PH-15, and Tables PH-2 through Tables PH-4. You have that in the booklet, as well as a redline version that was in the sire brief history. So, back in 2008, the county comprehensive plan was amended to include the Villages of Pasadena Hills. The physical plan was very innovative at the time. It included village centers with mixed uses, residents that could actually walk to the village center, because they're all within a quarter of a mile, gridded streets for efficiency for traffic, buffers around each village, and precise requirements for the number of schools that were needed, protections for view corridor and environmental areas. The area plan actually won a well-deserved APA award, and these features are still intact. By 2012, the VOPH financial plan was adopted, demonstrating how private developers would cover the costs of road infrastructure through the mobility fee program. And I want to add as well that the mobility fee program for present county also won an award. So, the VOPH Property Owners Group covered the original cost and the new update that you have in your packets in exchange for future development fee credits. Development fee credits are actually a better and easier way for the county to fund a lot of these special areas plans. We do this in Connected City as well. But like every plan, there's always a need to update whenever the conditions and the resources, the funding opportunities, the technologies, and the market demands change over time. And this is the case here. Despite the rebounding recovery in Pasco County these last few years, VOPH has had some very distinct development disadvantages. There were higher surcharges imposed in elsewhere in the county. There was a lack of utilities in close proximity. There also was a mandatory TND requirement, which is rather unique. The surcharges need to be reduced so that VOPH will be more competitive and create a more level playing field. The property owners group met again. They had hired Height Design to update the plans to include more accurate road construction cost estimates, because we had just done Connected Cities, so we had, we had access to real prices. The beneficial and unexpected funding sources that came in from external entities like Connected City and FDOT. There was more accurate school land acquisition costs. The county had purchased the land for the super park. And there was also some changes to the actual borders of VOPH. With Connected City, Ashley Groze was actually transferred to Connected City, because it was under one developer now. We did want to extend the infrastructure, particularly gigabit infrastructure, across the street. And finally, Zephyr Hills actually annexed some outlying parcels. So there was a lot of need to update the plan, which is why we're here today. Across the street in Connected Cities, Connected City residents are allowed to use their golf carts. And they would be accessing the VOPH super park. While we, as planners, wanted the same opportunities for the VOPH residents. We want them to use their golf carts on particular paths that will give them access to the village centers, all village centers, as well as if they wanted to go to the Crystal Lagoon, for example, when they were at public, public events, they would be able to do that. So we really tried very hard to make those two communities very easily seamless transition between the two. So anyway, the update needed to reflect all these new changes and opportunities that have arisen. Let me focus on the con-plan consistency before I turn it over to Pat for the details. Let me go. Boy, I'm going backwards, hold on. Okay, proposed new revisions. I'm just going to give you quickly synopsis of the new revisions in the con-plan. The TND is no, electricianal neighborhood design is no longer mandatory in VOPH villages. It's the only place where it was mandatory. It's still an option. It's always an option. And you actually have discounted rates for mobility fees as well if you grab that option. But now it's an incentive option and it's consistent with other areas of the county. In exchange, we felt like the alternative transportation facilities would become mandatory. These are basically the golf cart paths. It's an easy way to explain it. Making this consistent with Connected City and allowing the Connected City and VOPH residents the option of using their golf carts to the super park, the commercial centers, and the schools. And then the development applicants must now host, this is mandatory, a publicly noticed village meeting at least 30 days prior to the VOPH Planning and Policy Committee. So those are basically, in a nutshell, the new stuff. There's a lot of text revisions that are clarifications. Pat will go over some of those things as well. I think it's important to note that there are no changes to the number of entitlements. There's no changes to the number of residential units. There's no, no changes to the intensity of non-residential uses in square feet. Sometimes people think we get these things, we're changing these, we're not touching that stuff. I'm going to just list a few policies here that shows consistency. I just make a note right now, there is one, we are still to resolve. There were some concerns raised by Parks and Natural Resources, very last minute stuff, but we want to make sure that they're happy about linkages, and we're going to meet with them on Tuesday. So if we just can hold that off until we resolve it, which I'm sure we will be able to resolve, let me at least go through these policies here that are consistency. So, we have policy flu six establishing a long-term vision, smart growth, long-term mobility, successful transitions, urban services, capital construction of infrastructure. So you know, so I said earlier that long-term plans have to be reviewed, because conditions change, markets change, and things of that nature. So it was very important that would justify this. Also, the addition of alternative transportation facilities for VOPH residents, Connected City residents adds the access to the super park, the schools, commercial centers, construction costs, new external contributions for roadway improvements have also impacted the financial plan. So we are bringing this up to date as consistent. Policy flu 6.1.3 mechanisms for urban development. Since the Pasadena Hills area plan is an overlay to the Pasco County future land use map, text revisions we need to clarify. And this is important that any rezoning or similar action which results in an increase in density or intensity, even if no con-plan amendment is required, it does require adherence to the VOPH regulations and financial plan fee structure. When we were reviewing past applications that have come in, the way the text was written earlier was very confusing at times. And we needed to make sure that we understood this, that everyone understood this is an option. You can always develop your property and what's under existing, existing zoning and not have to be subject to the surcharges that are expected, okay? So, but compliance with other regulations otherwise is required. Policy flu 6.4 Connected Multi-Model Transportation System. Allowing additional means of transportation, golf carts, electric personal assistants, mobility devices, mopeds, micro-mobility devices are the requirement to construct alternative transportation facilities. And to allow these additional means of transport expands this policy and incorporates new technologies available today. So we're coming with a recommendation, the local planning agency file the proposed amendment, con-plan amendment, consistent with the con-plan, and to recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners. I'd like to now introduce, actually Joel wanted to say something? And then Pat.
Good afternoon, Joel Two, Two and Associates. I am land use counsel for the property owners group who comprise the Village of Pasadena Hills. I just have a couple procedural explanations to give, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Gasway to briefly summarize these proposed changes. You, as the planning commission, of course, have fairly recently inherited this oversight responsibility to some extent for Pasadena Hills, based upon the termination of the DRC and the transfer of many of those powers and responsibilities to you. But just by way of explanation, Pasadena Hills, as Ernie pointed out, was established in 2008, really as the prototype. It was the first special area plan district we did with a separate stewardship district. So we've been living with this now, coming up on 12 years ironically. But as Ernie pointed out, despite some great planning and great capital improvement budgeting, the marketplace simply didn't embrace it, and, and we're here to try to address that. And this is being done as a concerted action. As they did originally, the property owners group is funding all of the consulting expense to support the county-initiated amendments. They did that with the original enabling documents. They have, let's say, a few million dollars invested to this date in the planning of this area. Many of the matters, the individual approvals based upon the stewardship district structure, they pass through, as I believe you're aware, they pass through the VOPH Policy and Planning Committee. They have an advisory board, basically like yours, appointed by the board. But at this point, what they review are the individual zoning requests, and that's why this is a little different for you. You're not used to seeing this on a regular basis, because those individual MPUDs are required to go through that advisory board, and then they make the recommendation to the BCC. However, based upon the restructuring that the county's done now, the comprehensive plan amendment that deals with the overall policy structure, the comprehensive plan amendments obviously have to come through you now as the local planning agency. And in addition, because the stewardship ordinance itself was codified in the land development code, that amendment of the land development code has to come through you for your recommendation. Now, we took, we took all of these items to the Policy and Planning Committee last month so that they could recommend, review, and recommend approval of the financial plan. So it gets a little technical and complicated. They have to, to present the recommendation on the financial plan, which is the capital budget. You need to present the recommendation on the comprehensive plan amendment and the stewardship district ordinance revision. But with that said, Pat is going to present to you the exact same overview that he presented to them. He gave them the full overview so they could see their pieces and yours. And Pat's also going to give you the full overview so you can see all those pieces, since both of you obviously have responsibility and jurisdiction over the pieces. But we think it helps if you see the entire picture to better understand the pieces we're asking you to recommend approval for. With that said, and to expedite things, Pat is going to present the full overview one time, not repeated on the two agenda items. Even though, I'm sure Mr. Goldstein will tell you, you need to, to take official actions separately on the two agenda items. But he's going to give you the overview once. Feel free to ask any questions you have at any time, and we'll do our best to help you understand this monstrosity that is documented before you. So I'm happy to answer anything procedurally, and Pat will get into all the details with you. Thank you.
Sure. Can I ask one quick question if I may?
Yes, sir.
First, is Ben Carroll, is that actually the attorney that passed away a number of years ago?
Correct. This goes back 2008. Originally, Ben Harold represented a portion of these ownership groups. I represented a portion, and he and I were collaborating on this. And unfortunately, it was, it was during that adoption process and prior to the final adoption that Ben unexpectedly passed away. And that's why the county named this district in, in memory of Ben, because he had, was instrumental in initiating the original concept. And that's why.
I met him a number of years ago, and he was a very kind person.
Wonderful gentleman, but that's exactly correct. And that, that's part of the history of this, is David and I were working with Ben on it. And probably about halfway through that process, he, he, he passed away unexpectedly. And David and I wrapped it up, and the commission saw fit to name the district in, in Ben's memory.
But the other question I really have in here is, is this is a large, complex area with a lot of people living in here. I only see one high school, one elementary school, and it looks like two universities. Do you think that's sufficient for an area this size?
Well, that's a good question, and Mr. Gasway's going to explain what a great job the school district has done, and.
Yeah, I didn't say it was a great job, but I.
No, what I'm saying is the numbers are a lot better than what you're seeing. You're going.
So you have more than one elementary.
There are 11, my recollection is there are 11 school sites here, and I think eight of them are already committed or, or acquired.
I'm just saying what we, what we're given, that's, I haven't had a chance to.
Right. It'll be part of Pat's presentation, and he'll summarize that for you. And of course, Richard is here to, to back that up. We've worked with the school district on that, and the truth is, we're actually in better shape, from what you hear in a moment, we're actually in better shape in this area on meeting school demand than we probably are in most of our other active development areas, thanks to the school board being very proactive in this area.
So Joel, before you speak, I mean, before Pat speaks, can we just see if there's any public comment on this? Because Pat may want a teal or his presentation to respond to any public comments we get, if we have any, so.
Melanie Romanioli, City of Date City Community and Economic Development Director. And I just have a general comment. It's not an objection whatsoever. One of the things, since leaving the county and working for the city, that we've discovered is that a lot of the planning areas are also part of a utility service area, a joint planning area for annexation with the city. This is the Northeast Rural and as well as the Villages of Pasadena Hills. And my general comment is, we need to make sure that we are in concert with each other on when property is annexed into the city, under whose jurisdiction that this is going to fall. And in previous conversations around Zephyr Hills with all the annexations, there was some confusion. So if, if I can have possibly Mr. Goldstein address if they come into the city, or they're underneath the VOPH or Northeast Rural versus the city's jurisdiction when it comes to con-plan, future land use, and zoning changes and amendments.
So, the short answer is that it just, if there, if any of the properties in VOPH are annexed into, whether it's the City of Date City or Zephyr Hills, it will not affect the boundaries of the district. Now, there are some things that were already annexed that I believe Ernie's team has cleaned up to make it clear in these new boundaries that they're not included in these district boundaries. However, as a general rule, if there's new annexations, it doesn't change the boundaries of the district or the tax increment district that was created for this area. That being said, if a property is annexed, the city in theory could change the land use and zoning of the property. There remains under county land use and zoning until that happens.
Correct.
There is a policy in these plant, in these books, if you want to read them all, that does say that annexations are discouraged in this area, because they do have a financial impact on the remainder of Pasadena Hills. Specifically, there's surcharges, there's tax increment revenue, there's fees that are paid in this district that if they are then annexed into the City of Date City, there will, the county won't recover those fees, and it could actually cause some of the infrastructure in the area to not be able to be funded. So I would caution Date City. We made the same caution to Zephyr Hills when we met with them. Be careful what you're doing in this area. Because if you're annexing property and you don't have a plan to serve it with infrastructure, and you're not going to collect the same fees the county would, it could impact projects that the county and cities are jointly funding. And so we made it very clear to the city of Zephyr Hills that the county would not look kindly on annexations in this area.
Understood.
So I've given you the same warning.
Understood. The, the issue lies in that we have a, we currently have an interlocal agreement with the county stating there will be no contest with properties being annexed within this area and they cross. That's the issue that we need to just get straightened out from county to city to make sure that we're all on the same page.
So we probably just need to have a meeting about that and figure out where those properties are.
Okay.
If there's property that clearly isn't going to have an impact on the financial plan, it may be that we can just remove them from the boundaries now. I encourage you to sit, have a meeting with Ernie and his staff to go over that. Because we had a meeting with Zephyr Hills to try to hash some of this out.
Right.
Sounds like we need a similar meeting with Date City.
Thank you, David.
Okay, thank you.
Joel, did you want to add anything to that, or are you?
We're good, thanks.
Okay.
We agree.
Okay.
All right. My name's Pat Gasway. I'm with Height Design. And we've enjoyed the luxury of working on this special area plan since about 2007. Since its original adoption in 2008, our firms represented numerous property owners within the special study area. And so we've had many years of opportunity to implement the rules and regulations that we'll be talking about today. So not only did we have the luxury of participating in the original creation, along with many other people, but we've had the luxury of actually working with these words to try and create a development pattern that makes good sense for Pasco County. The, the amount of, of ground to cover here is a bunch. And, and this is a relatively high-level summary of the differences between where we are currently in our adoption and where we are proposing to be. where we are proposing to be. When, when it, when it's unclear because of the, the nature of the complexity of it or the unfamiliarity of it that any of you might have, don't hesitate to stop me. I can pick back up wherever you want to, to make sure that we get any questions you might have answered. Let's see. This really started many years ago with a group of property owners that, that brought forward the idea that this area would benefit from, from very specific planning and a very long-term implementation strategy. And recently, we had another group of property owners, many of which commented that first property owners group, that came back and said, we really should revisit where we are. Times change, as Ernie pointed out, things are different. And the property owners group really wanted to create a more level playing field in Pasadena Hills that otherwise exists in the remainder of the county. In, in being able to try and do that, they wanted to remove some negative market factors. The, the two biggest ones that we'll be dealing with today, and, and I will point out one, one nuance here, that says phase one, because there will be two phases of this. This first phase deals with eliminating two large negative market factors. The excessive development fees in terms of surcharges charged above and beyond the existing mobility fees or impact fees that apply in, in this suburban area, as well as a mandatory TND development requirement that is currently in the rules. When, when we look at the, those two things, those two elements cross a bunch of, of these books. The regulatory framework that actually implements these things is a combination of four different things. One of them is the stewardship district ordinance itself, which is the second item on your agenda today. The, the first one is the comprehensive plan overlay that applies to the entirety of this landmass. In addition to the, to the stewardship district ordinance, there is a master roadway plan that implements a roadway grid network that supports the, the transportation in this area. And most importantly, at the original adoption, the goal was to create a fiscally neutral financial plan that put the burden of, of infrastructure costs on new development. A wise move and, and that financial plan demonstrates a strategy in which to be able to do that effectively over a long period of time. When, when, when we first look at this agenda item, the comprehensive plan revisions that, that we're pursuing, first, eliminating the mandatory TND form of development and requiring a mandatory alternative transportation facility in the multimodal network that serves this area. Clarifying conformance with the financial plan and stewardship district for increases in density or intensity without the need for a comprehensive plan amendment. So for example, if somebody had opportunity because of their existing land use, but they wanted to increase their zoning to take advantage of that opportunity, in, in, in the current adoption, the language is a little bit unclear. We've clarified that. When it comes to clarifying the, the protection of the core reserve areas, you heard, we've had a little bit of comment from staff, we'll be doing some more work on that. In, in addition to that, we clarified the rural enclave buffers, right? So rural enclaves that existed during the adoption of this back in 2008 had requirements for some buffers. They were recommendations. Now we're changing those recommendations to minimums, which are far more clear and definable for implementation. It's the beauty of having gone through, you know, 12 years of implementation of those rules to understand where the clarity needed to be added. In addition to that, we're, we're requiring a mandatory neighborhood meeting for applications prior to the, to the Policy and Planning Committee. Actually, our, our firm's been responsible for numerous rezonings within the area and that's something that our firm actually elected to do even though it wasn't a requirement and demonstrated to us there's great virtue in having that meeting before the Policy and Planning Committee sits and hears the item. And, and we'll, we'll talk about those in a little bit of detail. For example, when, when you look at this, this is actually a specific portion, it's a village master plan of one of the 13 villages that's been adopted in the villages of Pasadena Hills. That, that this, this network of, of land masses have, have multiple colors, right? The red is the, is the village center itself. The brown is actually the high intensity node that surrounds it. That is a minimum four dwelling units per acre, maximum 10 dwelling units per acre intensity. In addition to that, we have this, this tan area that surrounds the brown that has up to five dwelling units per acre. And then outside the tan are these yellow areas here. Those are a maximum of two units per acre. The, the rules in the comprehensive plan overlay that's currently adopted requires everything that is more dense than three and a half units per acre to be developed in the TND form of development. And, and what we have found relative to the market, that is a very high level of mandatory implementation of that form of development. And our revisions are now eliminating that mandate and replacing it with the, the choice that we have elsewhere in the county. You can still do TND, you can do TOD, right, transportation oriented design, and, and you can do mixed use transportation reduction measures. I don't know who came up with that, that. But mudrum is, is yet again, another form of development choice and those are driven by incentives as opposed to mandates. So developers have the luxury of electing any of those forms of development and the thing that leads them to that choice is reduced mobility fees that allow them the, the desire to make that choice if they so choose. As part of the comprehensive plan, we are now including a mandatory alternative transportation network being embedded in our vehicular roadway network. This is exactly the same type of roadway network that we adopted in the connected city, the 8,000 acres adjacent to this 22,000 acre area. And what it leads to is a, a, a very vital and important port for all of the additional transportation outside the, the typical things that you might think of for vehicular networks. So we've got golf carts, we've got bikes, pedestrians and, and other personal mobility choices that can be included now within these rights of way of the master roadway plan. Because we've adopted it previously in the connected city, we now will be creating a 30,000 acre area where it is a seamless network of interconnected roadways that all conform with this same vehicular and alternative transportation network. It, it is a, a great way to be able to facilitate transportation of the residents within these two areas to utilize the super park without having to require them to get in their cars. We clarified the mandatory conformance with the financial plan and stewardship district for intensity or density increases without a comprehensive plan amendment. That, that language was, at, at, you know, in 2008, you think you're really clear and then you go through, you know, a dozen years and you figure out, yeah, I probably could have said that a little bit better. And so now we've clarified that language. So when you enjoy intensity or density increases, you are subject to the requirements of the financial plan and the stewardship district. We also gave some clarity here to the, to the core reserve areas. So the category one wetlands and the 50 feet of vegetated uplands, upland of those wetlands, as well as 50 feet of contiguous 100-year floodplain areas in addition to those class one wetlands. That's the item where staff is giving us, is giving us some additional feedback and we'll be working with them between now and the next public hearing in order to arrive at, at some clarity that makes sure that all of us are in concert together. The rural enclave buffers in, in the, in the current adoption, it, it gives this type of guidance, but without the specific clarity of minimums and, and some more specificity with regard to the plantings and opportunities that can happen within that buffer. So for example, this would be large lot rural enclave and this would be VOPH, you know, development patterns. This 50-foot minimum buffer area is defined as having multiple options where the inclusion of the retention of existing vegetation, hedges, mandatory minimum number of trees and the locations of berms or fences are specifically defined. And those are the things that get hashed out, especially with the adjacent property owners during the mandatory public meeting that we have prior to the hearing of the first application at the Policy and Planning Committee. Again, those neighborhood meetings, we found them to be invaluable. We understand that the points that the, the existing constituency has in adjacency to the application and gives us a good bit of clarity on how to effectively move forward maintaining a compatible application. You're not hearing an item today for the financial plan. It is not required to be heard by the planning commission. But I thought it'd be an interest, an important element of the regulatory framework to understand. The financial plan revisions kind of fall under four basic categories. One are general things like the adoption of the connected city capital improvement plan cost methodology. The, the second thing is the reduction of residential units by 20%. And that only exists in the calculations in the financial plan. I'm going to say that one more time because it's a little bit subtle, right? You heard Ernie say, we're not reducing any of the entitlements within the comprehensive plan. They all still are in effect. But in the financial plan, in an abundance of caution, we're saying, in our experience, what we found is the total maximum allowable entitlement intensity might not be arrived at. And if our denominator, right, the costs of these capital improvements divided by the number of units and square feet that are going to pay for it, if our denominator is larger than we think might ultimately be, then we've understated the required surcharges. So in an abundance of caution, we've taken 20% of those entitlements. We've taken 20% of our denominator and reduced it. Having that, that smaller denominator equals a higher surcharge. We believe that's prudent based on our experience in working in this marketplace and certainly after the last 12 years, we recognize that to be a bright element in our assumptions. And don't forget, the financial plan gets, has a mandatory update where at least every five years, we need to come back and do exactly what we're doing today. Analyze it, update the surcharges and re-adopt them so as to keep pace with the cost increases that we witness and with changes in the marketplace. We also reflected the preferred forms of development consistently with those assumptions made elsewhere in the remainder of the county. In addition to those general things under transportation, we eliminated some roads funded by outside sources. Thank you very much, legislature, for bringing dollars to our doorstep and solving some of our required infrastructure. The second thing, we adopted the connected city external impact. So when we look at, at the, at the monies that we're raising with mobility fees and surcharges, we recognize we're going to take 20% of that money and, and know we're going to be spending it outside this special area plan limit. Alternative transportation facilities have been added in the financial plan, not just in the comprehensive plan. And we've also added some primary roadways for increased vehicular transportation capacity. In addition to that, we, we worked with the school board and we recognized the school purchases to date. School board's been very active and very effective in being able to purchase numerous sites for well less than what we budgeted previously. So they saved all of us money, bless their hearts. In addition to that, we recognized the school sites that have been committed to by developers who have gone through the process in their zoning applications to date. We also recognized the number of students that are going to be necessary through build out. So we're looking at the specific level of entitlements that we're dealing with. We've made sure that we accommodated the 11 schools, we'll talk about that a little bit more in detail, with the 11 schools that we need in total, high schools, middle schools and elementary schools, so that we can accommodate the expected enrollment for these entitlements. In addition to that, we, we looked at the park land since the original adoption, the, the parks and recreation monies that have been spent have effectively purchased the land that is necessary for the two district parks and the regional park. We consolidated them into a super park, a single facility that has all of those facilities in it, capitalizing on the efficiency of that methodology. And the amount of money that the land was purchased for is substantively less than what we had budgeted for. So we were able to make no change in that park land surcharge. First thing we'll talk about, the capital improvement plan cost methodology, really hard to read here, but when you open up your book, you'll see each one of those fuzzy little rows right there is a different type of roadway. Each one of those cross-sections are very specific, detailed, drawn by engineers and there is a cost estimate with each one of those items specifically included in this adoption. So we took all those specific cross-sections, created engineering cost estimates and then said, okay, this cost, we're going to add 10% contingency and we're going to add additional percentages. I wish I could read that at my age. But design CEI and landscaping allowances have been added to those predictable costs founded on the county's manual of costs to be used in financial guarantees. If you were going through the development process, you want to record a plat, you would put a performance bond in place for infrastructure necessary. Those costs are estimated utilizing a manual prepared by Pasco County. Those are the costs that we use in our engineering cost estimates for all of those lineal feet of curb, all of those square yards of asphalt, all of the alternative transportation facilities that we are including in each of those cross-sections. You got to ask yourself, how are we doing? Because we've got a little experience, right? We did this right next door in the connected city. So we went back and looked at three specific examples. This one happens not to be in the connected city, but it's a nice example of, of a large collector road. So these three examples, 3,000 feet of, of Rangeland Boulevard, a couple of thousand feet of Marada Boulevard in the connected city and just shy of a mile of Overpass Road in the connected city. When, when you look at all of these calculations, what you find is we took the contractor's pay application, right? The specific contract, the contractor was paid for the construction of those facilities and, and compared it to the costs that we would have calculated based on the connected city. And we also looked at the current way the financial plan in the villages of Pasadena Hills calculates costs. It's founded on the FDOT costs, right? A very different set of numbers. And what we see in these, these three examples, the, the contractor's costs are on average about 22% less than the methodology that we adopted in the connected city. And it is 84% less than the FDOT numbers, right? And consequently, what, what the Board of County Commissioners did is they looked at this methodology and agreed that the, the methodology for the connected city was more in line with the way that we are actually seeing construction costs come back in, from the contractors. This is where we talk about, you know, currently the entitlements in the comprehensive plan are about 42,000 dwelling units and in the comprehensive- are about 42,000 dwelling units, and in the comprehensive plan, we reduce those in the financial plan to about 33,000, a 20% reduction in the total number of units. Again, not diminishing the entitlements that people may enjoy, but recognizing the calculation of the surcharges would be a little bit higher, a little bit more conservative, if we assumed fewer units in the implementation. When we do that, we also reflected the preferred forms of development, right? So TND, mudroom, and conventional forms of development are, all have percentages assumed in our implementation strategy over the rest of the financial plan horizon. There is, of course, no change to the non-residential entitlements at all, regardless of whether it's the entitlements in the comp plan overlay or in the financial plan. We eliminated some roads funded by outside sources. Clinton Avenue, thank you very much, state. Highland Boulevard, right, which is this segment here, about $7 million of infrastructure is being funded by the Connected City. In addition to that, the Connected City is also funding about $3 million of that segment of Curly Road in its realigned condition. And in addition to that, the Zephyr Hills bypass has now been elected to be reduced from a six-lane planned road to a four-lane divided highway. So those reductions or eliminations have substantive effect in the calculation of the required surcharge to balance the fiscal requirements for transportation. When we look in our laundry list of costs, when you look at your budget, you'll see that there's about a $41 million reduction in our external facilities because of electing to utilize that same 20% calculation that we adopted in the Connected City. Bunch of things got funded, like the interchange at I-75 and Overpass Road. In addition to that, we added alternative transportation facilities. This is an example. This is a two-lane road. That two-lane road has two additional lanes established for alternative transportation. In addition to that, we also have sidewalk facilities for bikes and peds. In addition to that, there's a different typical section we can show you. When you have a four-lane divided facility, we have those now, this is a slow-speed road. When we get to higher-speed roads where we have higher volumes of traffic, we take those facilities and take them out of the roadbed and put them on their own individual trails outside the road. Those facilities are now mandatory in VOPH. In this particular slide, we added a couple of substantive changes to the roads. These red roads that you see on this map, those are intermediate facilities, those are two-lane roads. The other roads are four-lane facilities like Overpass Road here and Handcart Road. The two new substantive changes in facilities are the change of New River Boulevard from the Zephyr Hills bypass up to Overpass Road. That changed from a two-lane road to a four-lane divided highway. In addition to that, we have Kiefer Road, all the way from Curly to US 301, where we're changing that cross-section from a two-lane road to a four-lane divided highway. When we look at the school land, the Pasco County School Board did a needs analysis in this special study area. In looking at that special study area, they recognized that, yes, as in accordance with the initial adoption, we need 11 schools to support the entitlements that are coming in that area, a combination of high school, middle schools, and elementary schools. That big green blob right there is the limits of the superpark. You can see the county has purchased three sites. Those three sites have multiple schools within them. They've spent about $7 million to date. We also recognize these three purple facilities there, those sites have been committed to by the owners of those properties who've gone through the zoning process already. And what that does is it leaves an additional two schools that need to be incorporated in the future planning as we go through the long-range planning horizon here in this particular study area. So $7 million to date, another $5 million in these committed facilities, and another $2.7 million that will be necessary in the two facilities that will come in the future. When you go through this rigorous calculation based on the entitlements that we expect in the financial plan, what you discover is that, again, two more schools that need to be incorporated in the planning, and the overall budget for school land is less. Consequently, the surcharge to supplement the current impact fee for school land has gone down. I'll get to the punchline in a second. What we said in the parkland, thank goodness, the Parks and Rec had the luxury of being able to work with some property owners that are in VOPH and were able to acquire the superpark facilities for substantively less, about $30,000 an acre, instead of the $50,000 an acre that was in the original budget. Consequently, we could have reduced the surcharge, but we left the surcharge the same in order to allow some funding for future interest, because right now, the county has borrowed money from the environmental land acquisition program as well as the other benefit districts for parkland, and those loans need to be paid back. We've allowed the surcharge to be able to accommodate some of that interest that may be necessary until those loans are paid off. Okay, so what's the punchline? The summary of the development fees, we've got three basic surcharges that operate in the villages of Pasadena Hills. Transportation surcharge is now going to be $259 per single-family dwelling unit. That's usually the measuring stick that we use. There's a different fee for each type of land use, but the one that we use to commonly evaluate the changes is a single-family detached unit. The school land surcharge has gone down to $112. So the transportation surcharge has been reduced by $5,208. The legislature did us a tremendous favor by allowing a bunch of funding to come to this particular area. School land has a savings of $732 per single-family dwelling unit. The parkland surcharge has had no change. So when you add the savings, there's a $5,940 savings per residential unit in terms of the surcharges that are going to be charged in order to have a fiscally neutral financial plan. And consequently, this chart has gotten more robust because there are different fees for conventional, different fees for mudroom, different fees for TND, and different fees for TOD as well, just like in the rest of the county. Facilitating choice. In addition to the financial plan that supports all the decisions that we make in the comprehensive plan overlay, there's a stewardship district ordinance. We did many things. The easy way to say it is, we updated the ordinance to implement all of the changes that I just talked about in the comprehensive plan as well as the financial plan. In addition to that, we've increased the administrative fee in VOPH. Currently, it's 200. We increased it to 400 in order to be able to accommodate the additional things that are necessary in VOPH that the staff wouldn't have to do outside VOPH. In transportation, we added a transportation analysis that is specific to the villages of Pasadena Hills. It's unlike timing and phasing that you would typically hear in an application coming forward elsewhere in the county, because we have a mandatory grid system of streets, and the analysis says, instead of analyzing the entirety of the area that may be affected, we analyze the specific roadway network adopted by ordinance that you are going to have an application within, and we determine what portions of that network is necessary to safely support the implementation of that application. So a new transportation analysis, and we updated the percentage of the internal roads, or the internal road costs allocated to roadways and the portion allocated to bike and ped. Bike and ped facilities in VOPH are much more robust than they are in the remainder of the county. The remainder of county, I think, is, right now, at about 2% of the total roadway costs are being allocated to bike and ped facilities. In VOPH, that boosts up to 10%, so almost a five-fold increase in the amount of money that's dedicated to those non-vehicular improvements. We also added something that's not been done in the county. We've added the opportunity to create a VOPH fee credit registry. So when you build one of these big pieces of infrastructure as an applicant, you create a mobility fee credit, and those fee credits may be larger than all of the credits that you can utilize in your development. You may not have enough density or intensity to recover all of the investment that you've made on behalf of this financial plan. And consequently, we're creating a fee credit registry where others within VOPH can identify who they can go to in order to purchase unused credits. All of that was accomplished in this revision, as well as we've updated a master roadway plan. That roadway plan, again, founded on very specific engineering cross-sections and quantity and unit price calculations that demonstrate the costs associated with each of those roads, instead of using very gross and oftentimes not applicable FDOT average statewide costs. In addition to that, we've detailed all of these intersection geometries so that people can understand the additional right-of-way that may be necessary at the intersection of either a two-lane by two-lane or a six-lane by four-lane. All of those are now detailed and shown specifically for predictability. If you tell people what you expect, they're far more likely to do it. In addition to that, there are exhibits that are shown on aerial photography that demonstrates the rights-of-way for all of those roadways that are required in the roadway network so that, again, not only the public, but also the development industry can be put on notice, these are the roadways that we expect to be in your development plans. I realize that's like drinking from the fire hose. That's a lot of ground to cover, especially on things that you may not have been familiar with during that process. Happy to go back and to talk about anything that wasn't particularly clear.
All right.
Great.
Any questions from up here?
The only comment that I have is, I not disagree with anything, but the only problem that I have is that why we didn't receive these books a few days before this meeting to review this and get familiar with that? That is the only comment that I have.
Okay.
Doesn't make any sense.
You actually received a redline version of the changes as well as a text. It wasn't in the book format, but that came with your sire packages and we put them on there. This is today, because all it is, is it took what was in the sire and basically put it into formats actually easier to handle, but it's the same information you had before.
There's still a lot of information for a couple of days, so it's just, we need to be informed when it's something that, so much information. I not disagree with the plan. I love the plans, but it's just to be able and be sure that we have all the information we needed to make the right decision, that is all.
Yeah, that's fair comment.
I believe that is no, wasn't handled properly.
Ernie, while you're there. So I did get a couple of phone calls about the rezonings, the density increases that occur outside the villages, and I know that we clarified that language to kind of level the playing field between the villages, the density increases in the villages that are subject to all these requirements, and then the density increases outside the villages that are, wasn't clear whether they were subject to these requirements.
Like the enclaves, you're talking about like outside, the countryside?
Any, the countryside, anything outside the villages. So we've added language to make it clear that if they're increasing density, they're subject to these requirements.
Yeah.
The only concern that I've heard, well, I've heard a couple of concerns, but one potential concern is, as you saw on the agenda today, we have some density increases where they're just adding one unit.
Yeah.
Okay, so we need to figure out, is there some de minimis threshold on those density increases outside the village that you're not subject to the plan? Because I'm not sure we intended, you know, a single rezoning to add one unit.
Yeah.
I don't know what the right threshold is. I don't know if it's a threshold we use for timing and phasing or for something else.
Right.
But there probably is some de minimis level of density or intensity increase outside the villages that shouldn't subject you to the plan, and we need to run that. I know, the property owners group may have some thoughts on that too, because, you know, we're trying to level the playing field for them, and we don't want large rezonings occurring outside the villages that don't have similar requirements, but I doubt that even that group would object to a rezoning for one unit. But I don't know where the right threshold is, but we need to think about that before this gets to the Board of County Commissioners.
Right. And I suggest we're meeting on Tuesday anyway, so let's put that on the agenda.
Yeah, conception, we've figured that. We just need to figure out, is that, like David says, is that 10 units, 15 units, 100 units?
We have to quantify it.
Probably what's in the development trigger that you, particularly become a development, if you're going to be a development, you need to be treated like all the other developers.
That's reasonable, yeah.
So we just need to think about that. And then the other comment that's somewhat related to that is the, all the zonings that occurred prior to VOPH, and what level of density increases are they getting, if any, without triggering this plan? So we need, it's the same conversation, but it's related.
Okay, we will handle that.
You have, somebody behind you that wants to speak.
One more question, quickly, if I could, Mr. Chair. It appears in the southeast corner on some of the maps I'm looking at, there's still city designated property within the boundary of the VOPH. Is that correct?
Yeah, we're in the process.
Let's go ahead and get up to the microphone so we can get it on.
We picked this up a few, you know, years after we first started this, there have been those changes, and we are in the process now of comparing property tax maps. We had meetings with Zephyr Hills, like what David has said earlier, hold off, you know, stop doing this, because it affects other things. And so we're looking at all those things put together. We will have a final map that will match that, and it'll be the actual official, at least 2019, VOPH boundary with parcel numbers.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Renee Brown, Natural Resources Manager. Both Ernie and Pat mentioned that we had some concerns, so I thought I should clarify what those are to you. Our concerns pertain to the proposed changes to the core reserves and open space system. The core reserves are based on category one wetlands and named lakes, but they also include upland habitats associated with these wetlands, and they are described in the Comprehensive Plan Amendment and a significant part of the Comprehensive Environmental Protection Strategy that they've outlined in their Comprehensive Plan Amendment. There are three components to this Comprehensive Environmental Protection Strategy. All three of them relate to the core reserves, and the core reserves took considerable effort to identify and put in place. So we feel that more due diligence is needed before we can agree to any proposed changes. We are planning to meet with them next week. We also plan to conduct a thorough analysis of proposed additions and removals of each habitat type and conduct a field review so we can verify these in the field. So I just wanted to clarify that, and we look forward to meeting with them next week.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you can, I assume that means you're going to work on that before you go to the commission meeting, yeah, WCC. Okay. Anything else from up here?
I was just going to mention, from the school perspective, we met with David, I met with Joel and Pat and Kristi, and we've, this was back in October, so we've gone through all this, and we support going forward with this. We have enough school sites, so we're good.
Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the comprehensive plan.
We probably need to go and take action on P-8 first and then do P-9.
Okay, P-8.
That we approved P-A, P-8 as presented. So that we approve P-8 as presented.
Motion, a second, further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And then if you can get a motion on P-9.
Okay, now we're going to hit to P-9. If you remember the last part of Pat's presentation, he spoke specifically about the master roadway plan changes and the stewardship ordinance. Those are the two booklets in there that actually comprises the revisions, the proposed revisions to the Land Development Code.
So we need that in the motion.
Well, I just, I probably don't.
You could just make a motion to approve P-9, with the understanding there's a few issues that we're still working out that need to be worked out between now and the Board meeting.
Yeah, it's fine, I don't need to go through this.
Yes, thank you.
I make a motion that we approve P-9 and pending additional material moving forward.
Without surprise. You have a motion. We have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Mr. Chair.
That is the end of your agenda.
Includes for the day, right? All right, motion in, Jaren?
Your motion, Jaren?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Do we study these and have a test later on all those trails?
Ladies and gentlemen.
You will, you will have a test next time. It's going to be a combination of fill-in-the-blank and essay questions.
Can I circle misspelled words or type those?